Um. It wasn't long before the other two staff who worked with me in the I T team. Um. Decided that they would go. And so within four months of Grant um arriving, that was in. June two thousand thirteen, we now had a situation where those two staff who had been there seven and fourteen years respectively. Had now also voluntarily left the organisation. In one case, the um staff member had to sell their house here in Taonga. In order to leave the position at T C C. So in other words, there is a very high threshold that has had to be met. In order for these staff to have decided to have depart, to depart Taung City Council. So we also now had a further degradation in the work environment in the sense that not only had. A headless chicken scenario evolved from Lee Alton's work with clearing out management. But now I was the only person left at the Boplas Coalface um out of the three of us. So things had got even more desperate. Now, just like other um money that Grant got his hands on. The first thing that then happened was that the staff savings, salary savings from these two staff was then used to engage. More contractors and um um so the cycle sort of went on. Now, as I said, we, I had a second meeting with the C E O Gary Paul and Jane Lovell Gad, the group manager. Um and on the second of September and another manager was in attendance at the time. Um. What then happened was that in October of two thousand and thirteen. That other manager was then essentially targeted by Grant Strang. And the upshot of that was that he, Grant Strang made life very difficult for this manager. And this manager then decided in December two thousand and thirteen. To leave without any other employment at that point to go to. On the basis that the workplace had become so unhealthy and stressful that it wasn't worthwhile working at T C C anymore. Now. This is um yet another person who has departed. And we actually have quite a large amount of staff turnover occurring at this point. And still, nobody in terms of management, Jane Lovell Gad or Gary Paul, has actually done anything worthwhile. In my view, the Taonga City Council workplace had descended into what I would call the Wild Wild West. With rate payout monies essentially being used on contractors. Um. Who were in part there to do what Grant Strang wanted. And that included um degrading the workplace even further. So what was supposed to be. A workplace under the Local Government Act that was at a higher standard than what you might find in a standard business. Had in fact, in my view, actually descended into something far worse. And this was only possible because of the large amounts of money available to councils to spend in. Ways which a standard business would not have available. And essentially, Grant, in my view. Um. Made use of rate payout monies to actually uh actively degrade the workplace. And there was no way on this earth that the management at T C C could not have been aware of this. Both from the information that they had received from me, but also the information they had to have received from other people. So Wild West, as I called it, that um existed at Taung City Council, could only exist in my view. Um. If Grant had been supported by Gary Paul, because clearly Jane Lovell Gad. Had had enough of him and um there had to be somebody above Jane which um was. Giving the orders and there was only one person above Jane Lovell Gad and that was the C E O Gary Paul. So essentially Gary had taken the promises of Grant Strang, Hawkline and Sinker. Which had probably come from um some work on Grant Strang's C V by a recruitment company, I suspect. But I can't be a hundred percent sure of. And um essentially, we've now got somebody. Um. Who is unbelievable within a council environment, just causing carnage everywhere and management is doing nothing about it. Now, around November two thousand and thirteen, um Grant Strang moved to get another group manager. This group manager was Louise Miller, who was in charge of the community and environment portfolio. So a very awkward fit, in my view, in terms of having I T under there. Ostensibly, this um change was done because Louise Miller, who had come from Corombe Borough Council in the U K. Had been involved with I T strategy over there. But in terms of myself and many other staff. We actually saw that as being a um lame reason why I T had to be under Louise Miller. And in fact, there was nothing whatsoever preventing Louise Miller from working on I T strategy. But still not being the group manager in charge of Grant Strang. I never, along with most other staff, um ever saw Louise Miller in the I T area at all. So I believe that this was indicative, in my view, of the fact that she knew that there were issues. But she certainly did not want to come down to the I T area and perhaps um find out about these. So a fairly negative workplace environment continues. Which is just now yet another manager failing to do what I would call their job. In January two thousand and fourteen, Anna Bolton was recruited to be the H R manager. Taking over from Jane Lovell Gad in that regard, who was acting. And um we also had another change, which was that, for some reason. Um. Whenever there was a meeting between I T staff and Grant, um I don't know whether it involved other meetings Grant had, but. Certainly with any I T staff, not just myself, there would be somebody from H R in attendance. Um. They were never invited to the meeting, but were always sat there in the corner and um. Any questions about what they were here for were never answered, but they um sat there with their notepad making various notes. And um that continued for quite some time. A very peculiar situation and one which I've never experienced before. At Taung City Council or for that matter, any other organisation. Now, since about January two thousand and fourteen, Grant Strang had been asking for feedback from various I T staff. About ways to improve the I T area and hadn't really been getting, from what I could tell, very much feedback at all. So after um a couple of months of asking for this feedback, he eventually then. Said that he would like um anybody to put any feedback they had on the whiteboard in the I T area. And um um he will then have a look at the feedback and um see what he could do. So I put up two comments um on the whiteboard that related to Grant Strang and um his management style or lack thereof. And um other staff reported to me after seeing the comments that it very much was on the mark, but something they thought fairly brave to do. So this um, these comments were put on the whiteboard in the I T area in the week starting the third of March. Two thousand and fourteen and I think I put them up probably on the fifth of March, so the Wednesday. Um. When Grant Strang saw the feedback, um it wasn't long before a couple of members of the H R team. Were down in the I T area, asking other staff in the area about what was actually going on here. Um. I wasn't myself questioned, but I heard this from other staff. So Anna Bolton was fully aware. As was Louise Miller, I believe, what was going on. Now, on the week, now on the week starting the tenth of March two thousand and fourteen. I had, was scheduled to be out at the O R P treatment plant doing some work there for most of the day. So I returned about four P M um from O R P um after having a fairly long day there um without any lunch. And on my return, Grant Strang appeared about thirty minutes later, requesting that I attend a meeting, which. Appeared to be of a technical nature or something. I was not particularly interested as I had not had any lunch that day and um. Was wanting to get some unpacking done and sort out a few other things from the day's work. But Grant Strang insisted that it would only take five minutes. So I went up to the meeting room, which he led me to. Um. In the meeting room were Louise Miller, um Anna Bolton and Grant Strang. And they reported that they had security concerns, but didn't know what they were at the time. They stated that I was on special leave and would not need to turn up to work until they had determined if an investigation was needed. There was, from my point of view, a very direct connection between what was the whiteboard comments and the events that were unfolding. Um. This was, in my view, going to be the start of a witch hunt. And the um issues for the witch hunt were essentially being identified at this point in time. I departed for home and did not um see what was a security guard who had been engaged for this meeting. But apparently other staff saw the security guard and advised me afterwards, did I know about that, which I hadn't noticed. But yes, there was a security guard engaged for this meeting. Now, the next um sequence of actions that took place occurred on Tuesday, the eleventh of March two thousand and fourteen. Um. What happened was that there was an area set aside on T T C C storage. Which um held the information, this is the I T information from other councils. Um. And I was now the last person left at the Boplas Coalface. So from my point of view, I assessed the situation and decided that, yes, this was going to be a witch hunt. Yes, I would be suspended at some point in time and um I was the only person left who realistically. Had an understanding of the Boplas and its confidentiality requirements with regard to this information provided by other councils. So consequently, on the afternoon of Tu- Tuesday, the eleventh of March, given that. I hadn't been told I didn't have access to T C C, I was on special leave. I connected into T C C and deleted all of the Boplas. I T admin information that had been provided to me from other councils. So this didn't in any way affect any of the I T information. Um. Pertaining to T C C solely, it was just information from other councils. Uh. This was done on the basis that um I would be suspended down the track, which was later proven to be the case. And that if a witch hunt did occur, which was, in my view, also proven to be the case down the track. Um. That I may not wish to continue to work at T C C. So by deleting the data, I had fulfilled. Any trust or memorandum of understanding obligation I had with other councils that were part of Boplas. And I would be able to leave the organisation without any um residual matters still remaining. I also didn't believe that the management at T C C was sufficiently competent, in my view, to actually. Deal with this information from other councils in the manner in which it should have been dealt with. And so all of those factors were put into my assessment to delete that information. I also had a copy of that information, all encrypted um on my um personal laptop. Which I used at T C C on various occasions and um. So it wasn't as though the information was entirely gone, there was still one remaining copy of it. Now Louise Miller, who had been involved at the Corombe Borough Council in the U K. Had actually also been involved in a partnership between, I think it's Aylesbury um Borough Council. So just two councils instead of nine. And they had drafted up a document which um she had been involved in. And essentially, the document was mirroring exactly what was the situation with Boplas. Which was that information that was of a confidential nature to each council. Needed to be maintained as confidential and if at any stage a staff member believed that that information. Would be compromised in some way, they had to take all practicable steps in order to secure it. And from my point of view, this um uh document and Louise Miller's involvement with this. Exactly mirrors what was going on at Boplas and Louise Miller had access to all of this information. Anyway, and she was also the group manager in charge of Boplas. Um. And I know this because I asked her this in the employment investigation and she confirmed it. Although she didn't seem to actually be aware of who the Boplas staff were, but anyway. Um. That was um the situation that unfolded there. So from my point of view, Louise Miller. Um. Knew full well the worst case scenario that could actually unfold in terms of a shared council service. And that situation had unfolded at T C C and Louise Miller herself was part of the problem. Because she didn't understand um Boplas and had made no effort to do so. Nor had she been making any effort to actually engage with the I T area for reasons I mentioned earlier. So what then happened is that T C C was still busy figuring out. What issues they were going to have in the employment investigation that would be investigated. But prior to that being fully ratified, um on the twenty fifth of March two thousand and fourteen. Um. A search warrant was executed at my residential property or rural property. Um. A um total, I think, of about eight police officers and three cars turned up. And um scattered the whole of the three plus hectares, um looking for all I T assets which they seized. Now, in the process um of seizing I T assets, they also essentially disabled. The business that my partner had, um which was running from property, um so that she could no longer earn an income. And um the next thing that occurred the day after the search warrant is I receive a letter. From Louise Miller stating that Taung City Council is looking at having me suspended, not on pay. And the basis for this was a clause in the employment contract whereby if a police investigation continued for more than two weeks. T C C was entitled to do that. So this search warrant um. Was, in my view, making use of a criminal justice um process or criminal related process. In order to essentially um disable the second source of income. T C C would then use that same reason that there was a criminal investigation underway. In order to cut off my salary. So this was a, nothing other than an extremely aggressive stance by T C C. Now, in the um information I've provided, what then happened is that Bill Nadney, my barrister at the time. Wrote back and said that T C C couldn't rely on that clause in the employment investigation. Or employment contract because essentially the employment investigation and the criminal charges were one of the same. Now, the criminal charges which um were being laid or were subsequently laid later on were two. One was for illegal access to a computer system and the second one was for damaging a computer system. So these are two charges um which appear under the Crimes Act in New Zealand here and um. As a result of them being criminal offences, I think, which are punishable by two years and seven years of imprisonment. Maximum respectively, um there is of course a criminal disclosure. Now, this is where things get very interesting because um. We now have an employment investigation that still hasn't kicked off yet and that doesn't do so until. Approximately midway through April, I think, two thousand and fourteen. And we've now also got this criminal work underway. Now, there is approximately. Five staff involved from Spark in terms of either the employment or the criminal aspects of this. We've got about six staff from Price Waterhouse Cooper, had about three hundred dollars an hour now getting engaged. Um. We have multiple um employment lawyers and barristers getting engaged. So the costs are very rapidly ramping up for both the rate payer and the taxpayer. Now, I'll just jump um forward a little bit um to the actual criminal disclosure. Which occurred in October two thousand and fourteen. Um. What this criminal disclosure um allowed me to see. Was really what had been going on behind the scenes, which may not have been provided in an employment investigation. And what transpired from this was that the issues which ultimately came. Um. To a head in the employment investigation, that's six of them. Um. Had all come from either contractors or from Grant Strang himself. So the contractors which were involved in this were Chris Moore from Spark, Cliff Barrymore from Spark. And to a far lesser extent, Richard Mumford from Delta. Now, on Friday, the seventh of March two thousand and fourteen, which was a couple of days after I put up the whiteboard comments. Obviously, Grant had decided that um he would use that day to follow up with various contractors. On various reports he had asked for from them. And he essentially received reports. From Chris Moore, Cliff Barrymore and Richard Mumford. Now, the purpose of these in all cases was to. Um. Raise concerns. And by far, um Chris Moore was the one most active in this regard. Um. He had essentially started in October two thousand and thirteen collecting information. On um issues that could be used against me. Now. There's a particular technique that has been used here by Grant Strang. And the technique that he's using here is that because none of these staff uh have any history at T C C. They all come with a completely clean slate. So they can go around and identify. What can be or could be plausible issues, which the contractor may know have a possibly logical explanation. But essentially document those issues and essentially through lack of any past history. Um. Essentially obfuscate willful intent um in the process because they have no past history. So that is, I believe, an um primary aspect to this particular matter. Um. Which Grant made use of. And um, as I said, that that with um three contractors. So the end result was that he received some documents from those or some information from those three contractors, which he could then use. As a set of issues pertaining to me. And um. On that, later on that Friday, the seventh of March two thousand and fourteen, essentially he received those documents back. From those contractors, which then got circulated up to Anna Bolton and Louise Miller. So he essentially had the ammunition he needed to kick off a big um witch hunt if he wanted to. And um that is exactly what had um ensued on Monday, the tenth. Of the following week after I got back from O R P. Now, given that Chris Moore had been collecting this information back in October two thousand and thirteen. A few very interesting questions arise. We've actually got um October, November, December, January, February. So that is five months in which. Grant could have or Louise Miller could have asked me any questions about any of those issues, but instead chose not to. They were just being collected um for use later on. So the October two thousand and thirteen timeframe has some um specialist significance associated with it. Um. First off was the fact that the manager who came to me with the, in the second meeting with the C E O Gary Paul and Jane Lovell Gad. Um. Was being targeted by Grant Strang and this manager then subsequently left in December two thousand and thirteen. And the second thing which also occurred is that Chris Moore had identified, along with Grant Strang. There is some additional spends that were needed, which totaled one point three five million. Now, that additional spend um would normally, for anything above about ten thousand dollars, need to get three quotes from three separate companies. But essentially what happened here is that um the whole of the purchase was marked as urgent. And as a result of it being urgent, it then needed to only go through one supplier. So that it could be fulfilled in a expedient way. Now, while you could say that some of those things in there could be in the urgent category. A number of them, like licence codes, just needed to be emailed and there was significant cost associated with some of those licences. And for any supplier, given that there is no physical product that needs to be delivered, just perhaps a sixteen character. Licence code via an email or something similar, um it really didn't need. For those to also be done through one contractor. But nonetheless, um uh the normal systems were circumvented. And essentially the whole of the um contract for the supply of this one point three five million of equipment. Um. Went to Spark. Now, that occurred in October two thousand and thirteen. Which of course also has another special um sort of timeframe associated with it. Which was, that was the time at which the existing councillors were being replaced by the new incoming councillors. As a result of the election. The whole of that spend um was then made through Spark. And of course, um Chris Moore then got the opportunity to put that all in place. So we've now got a um very incestuous relationship on the face of it whereby. Chris Moore, who was the most active, also appears to have um been um. Uh. Starting his activity at the same time as this one point three five million spend occurred. So from my point of view, it wouldn't be too far fetched to conclude that there was a bit of an agreement there. Whereby, if you scratch my back, um I'll scratch your back. So that's what happened in October. So you've got three things coming together. The other manager being targeted, the one point three five million spend and the councillors um switching. Um. Or exiting and new ones coming in. All of this activity around me, it's perhaps um worthwhile taking stock of. How extensive this really all was. Um. There's a bit more of this story still to come. But what I can say is that as this whole incident um progresses. We actually have a vast array of people involved. So I'll just perhaps name some of these. And also the cost associated with this. So the council gets accused by the name of Richard Fowler in Wellington. Involved at six hundred dollars per hour. There's also a bit further down the track a barrister by the name of Craig Stevenson, Craig Stevens. Also from Wellington engaged at what I would estimate to be about four hundred dollars an hour. Uh. The barrister Matthew Ward Johnson, who works at from um Harrington House, is engaged at three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. We have employment specialist Simon Lapthorne from Simpson Gresson in Auckland also engaged. I'm not quite sure what that would um cost per hour, but um that would not be cheap. And also a Shan Wilson from Simpson Gresson in Auckland at an estimated, I would imagine, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. But that's just an estimate on my part. Um. In the addition to the legal advisers I've mentioned. We also have a number of Price Waterhouse Cooper staff involved at approximately three hundred dollars per hour. So we have Alan Homewood, Campbell McKenzie, we have Craig Calderwood, we have David Hunter. Uh. We have Richard Tims. And then moving on to other um entities, we then have. Brent Whale from Computer Forensics Solutions. Um. I'm not quite sure what his chargeout rate is per hour. We also have Richard Mumford from Delta Technologies getting involved and I don't know what his cost per hour. As well as Jeff Bernard from Delta Technologies. Um. We also have um around about. Five Spark staff in. Um we also have um around about five Spark staff involved in various aspects of this case. Um and um at the centre of that, of course, is Chris Moore. And we also have a bit further on down the track, Glenn Tinsley from um Haikaku Investigations and why he involved. And we also have a psychologist a bit further down the track by the name of Keith Hadley McGregor involved. Um so all of this is um definitely um going to be an extremely expensive process and one in which, from when the issues were identified by Chris Moore, there was five months for somebody in management to ask me any question they wanted about anything that had been identified before it got to this point. Now, the reason it got to this point wasn't because that couldn't happen. It was because the issues were architected by Grant Strang, in my view, in order to achieve this big bang approach and that is exactly what he got.